The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Agenda item number three, we have me fill the comments. Agenda item number four, certificates of completion, awards and bond. We have our CEGIS security and privacy training by Liliana Lopez, FEMA, ELE's middle guidance program by Lou Saraco, NDLSP, Advocate's Guide to Serving Aging Veterans by Raymond Arretta, another one for ensuring EA signs the correct effective date, Raymond Arretta, bond continuation certificate, Lou Saraco for permanent clerk, Michelle Lopez, Deputy District Clerk, and Javier Lucio for transcode. That will be the name. Agenda item number five, we have our county for extension activity.
Good morning. You have our entire, our reports on your iPads now. So if you have any questions, let me know. I just wanted to highlight one thing. On Friday, I will be having or hosting our Fresh Trace Training. This is a training for producers to learn how to work with our local school districts to provide local produce in their product in the school district. So if y'all know any local farmers, ranchers, producers, send them our way. They can call the extension office to register for the training. So we're trying to boost that, getting local localized food and produce into the school districts. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number six, discuss and take action on already known in Wilson County, connect routes operated by ACOG. County's annual cost is eighty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. My name's Sean Scott, I'm with Alamo area Council of Gethelins. Last time I was here before you, it was a year ago, we were talking about implementing new public transportation in Wilson County, which we did. We did the Connect Floridsville route that runs inside the city of Floridsville. And then we did a county route that operates and connects Southern Springs, Pandora and Laverne. And we've been working on getting the whole thing through there. We haven't got it there yet. Anyway, we did start those two routes. We did get them up running. Connect Floridsville is very successful right now. I will tell you that the Wilson County route is probably not as successful. Actions we've taken to get it more successful is I've added a more demand response transportation into Wilson County. In fact, probably another forty to sixty hours a week of service, just to try to establish where ridership could come from, so that we could get it moved to that kind of route and get that route adjusted. But for the most part, the good results are what's going on is Wilson County's gone about fifty-one percent from this time last year to current in ridership. Most of it is due on the Floridsville route. A lot of demand responses picked up on the Floridsville route, but actually Laverne has actually, has picked up some also. Last year about this time, I believe we were at around three hundred trips. We did over five hundred trips in this Laverne this last time. But I'm really here just to answer any questions. If y'all have any comments you would like to make on the public transportation, or if you have suggestions on which way you'd like us to go.
You need data on how many patrons ride daily?
Yes, sir. Every month, we give that to you in the report that goes into your board package at ACOG. And I've sent it to Scott now. I didn't realize that maybe all the information wasn't there or something, but I did send it to Scott because he was adamant about getting that. The monthly ridership reports.
What's our average ride a day?
For the month, I believe we're around four hundred trips a month.
When you count trips, how many persons actually get in that bus?
Unduplicated?
Unduplicated.
I do not have that kind of, because it's anonymous. I mean, a route system, we wouldn't know that it was Ms. Smith. We just know that a passenger gets on and a passenger gets off.
I think that's what the judge is asking, is the number of people on things. The trips. I don't need a name. But I want to be honest with you. I don't see many people in those buses.
Our goal was one ride per hour. We are hitting about one point three rides per hour right now, so we're exceeding that. We knew that, you know, the first year takes growth. We've got to get the marketing in, we've got to get resources or infrastructure in, stops like that. But no, I think the Floridsville route is extremely successful right now.
I think it would be helpful for the court to know those numbers, not person's names, just how many people are all riding that bus, not the trips. Because if you count trips, there, I mean, there's somebody on the bus, they're just making a trip. I need to know how.
No, that, that, when I give you a trip number, that is a person got on and a person got off. That's not, that's not from stop to stop. So when we sit there and say we did four hundred trips or that number, then that would be how many people used that system. That's how many, that's how many people got on the bus and got off the bus. Now, it could have been one person got on and off four hundred times, but, but it is actually counting the trip, a person getting on, a person getting off.
Is this in the county or is this in the cities?
In the report, you get both. You get the Connect Floridsville, you get the, I mean, the Wilson County trips, Wilson Route trips, and then you get another one on the demand response trips that happened in Wilson County. And I would say, I'll make sure that I send that out, but it broke out. I mean, Scott was telling me that, or Commissioner Aiken was telling me that it wasn't, you weren't getting that information. So I'll make sure that I distribute that better.
Okay, so pledging program, all the things that you can imagine with it, and us trying to network over where are we being successful with this, or where are we not, you know, what's working. Obviously, the route within Floridsville is working, and the entire route is designed to try to get people from the outline areas into town to be able to do things that they can't do in the outline areas. Laverne obviously is a stronger community than Stockdale, Pandora, Pope. They have a lot more reason to stay local rather than to come to Florida. Mrs. Demmer and I have been working with ACOG, trying to, are we being effective? You know, what, what are we doing? Are we spending the money wisely? How can we better get the ridership to match up with our goal of serving the people? Single biggest problem is, and you know, Mr. Scott and I have had local conversations about how are we advertising it? Are we regular? Because we were offering one day a week, and it's hard to build a customer base off of one day a week whenever people have doctor's appointments or things of that nature. That's how you control it. They can't pick today, they have to go whenever their primary care physician or their specialist says, here's your appointment.
And that's why we added that extra demand response.
And so the response from ACOG was, if we're not able to meet their needs this way, then we can add on the demand response. And they did it without asking for any more money from Wilson County to do that. So there were more people being served on the off days than there were on the day that it was planned, because they scheduled the ride. It's still, I mean, it works in Floridsville, it's just something that it's underdeveloped in the county at this point.
Before you budget, room. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number.
Make a motion that we renew Wilson County connect routes for another year as sponsored by ACOG in the amount of eighty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number six?
I would just like to get that on.
That's, if we can please.
Okay. Any particular format you want, or any, I collected a lot of data, so that's what I was.
Around data between the cities and.
Any demographic data or stuff like that?
I.
Okay. Definitely can do that. Okay.
Any other discussion? Here and now, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Vise habit, motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, we have Commissioner Perdola for the same grade, discuss, take action to set a public hearing date on designating County Road 356 as a non- through trucks. Should that be zone? No? It's your. Non- through trucks, okay.
Yeah. It doesn't have time.
No, well, because it's a set.
It's a, oh, just set the policy. Yes, you can, I mean, you can set it out for, what, fourteen days into ten?
Twenty weeks.
Two weeks.
Could you, could we set it during the next Commissioner Ford meeting?
You should.
I want to do that. And we can stop at ten o'clock at some point, comment at public hearing. All right, and make your motions.
I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing on the twenty-fourth, ten AM, to designate County Road 356 as non- through trucks.
Yeah, two. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion regarding agenda item number seven? Here and now, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Vise habit, motion passes. Agenda item number eight, discuss and take action on Toshiba copier contract for the emergency operations center. Sit here. You don't want to take a look at that contract right there. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number nine. Yeah, it's part of it, it's built into the budget. It's part of our construction budget, correct?
Construction budget.
Shouldn't be. All this Toshiba, the ELC.
If it's part of the construction budget, it would be part of the furnishing.
Furnishing, right here.
What would it cost to buy down?
Well, all of our fixtures are leased copiers because it includes the maintenance and counter. That's my point of view.
Is everything on here so far says C leaves somewhere? Yeah. We are writing down by here, six hundred dollars a year for copper.
Three hundred and thirty-eight a month.
Sixty, eighteen thousand two hundred and something dollars. This is your chairman, that's going to be at the ELC, the twenty emergency management and your office, correct? Do you have any?
Well, there's more than that. Your dispatchers are there too.
Dylan.
Well, but Leslie's going to be in the front, she'll be using this. You share in offices very well. Am I correct, Sheriff? So it's quite a few people using this. It's a lease. Yeah, so it's a lease. How's it in the furniture budget? It should be in the operating budget. Is it in the operating budget?
Not yet, but it will be in the next budget. The, this, along with all the other furnishings are budgeted to outfit the emergency operations center year over year, then it would be budgeted in the operating budget. It depends on when, I mean, I don't know when it's getting installed, when the monthly payment's going to start. I don't know this, I don't know any of that.
It's already been delivered. It's setting up there now.
Do you know what the difference is between this one and like the other ones that we just recently got? Because the.
There's no difference. Three hundred a month is actually a good price. Say thirty-six hundred a year is actually a good price.
Because it's a total package, they will take in.
They take care of it.
Anything that needs to be done, do it.
Repairs.
No charge.
Heat toner. Yeah. Honey and cream.
You're tied more to the contract for service than really being a cost for the machine.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is replacing the one that's, that emergency management is currently using.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's already in the operating budget, so this one is replaced.
So that one was deprecated, they can't repair it?
So this is not a new one, this is replacing the old one that they have, which is already budgeted.
What is that, two, y'all don't have, y'all didn't have two copper, one for emergency management, one for permanent.
No, sir. Well, actually, I think there is one for.
Yeah, and one of this, one of this owned by, was owned by emergency management, the other one's under us, the company's under us.
So they still have theirs to tie? Okay, I'm going to call a second time for a vote. It's not going to die for lack of vote.
Yeah, they do have a budget in emergency.
So that's a, a.
Well, that's for, I mean, if they're.
Okay, so I don't have a motion, that is going to die, go ahead and send that machine back to that company, okay? We're not going to vote on it, we need to send it back. We'll figure out something. All right, and we'll talk about it after court. Agenda item number nine, discuss, take action on interlocal agreement for the regional public defender office, local government corporation, RDPO, in Wilson County. This is an agreement that we sign every year. Call a second time for a vote or a motion. Does we sign this every year, gentlemen? Hey, that agenda dies. We have a motion?
I think today, this is awkward with the iPads getting used to it, so please give us a little bit to assimilate or hagglemate or other. Make a motion that we enter into an interlocal agreement for the regional public defender's office, local government corporation, as stated in this agreement.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion regarding agenda item number nine? Here and now, call for the vote.
This is only for capital cases, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's not felony, that's just capital.
A capital offense is a felony offense.
No, I thought this was only supposed to cover the bills that were seeking. Because you had your RPDO, that's your regional public defender office, all your other
It's your own? It does say capital offense, but that is also felony. It's the highest felony, which you can get to.
It's my understanding it was to. It's only capital offenses. All capital offenses are felonies, but not all felonies are capital offenses.
Yes, I discovered it's capital.
I thought it was, it was all felony offenses. Capital, yeah, felony.
Because again, this doesn't, this doesn't have a cost here. It's going to practice.
So.
I know it was a set fee or whatever.
So we have a line item in the budget for what we consider, what we call the regional public defender for capital cases. And I've always budgeted what we've always paid, which was eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. So that's what was approved in the budget without. It says automatically reviewed, so I would assume that that would mean at the same cost.
Well, if it says capital offenses, that's what the budget.
Right, that's, that's that line item.
Then it is.
Correct.
I don't have the contract, so I.
And if you read on one point zero, two judges authorized to appoint, program allows honorable judges of the judicial district have jurisdiction within the participants' geographic boundaries to appoint the RPVO for trial defense of the defendant in a death eligible capital murder case or cases by completing and submitting the RPVO and the attachment that's on here. So it does specifically say that.
Okay, does that, to clarify, does that would be all capital offenses?
It does not have a cost statement.
No, but we budgeted already. What is it, eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand. We have to refer back to the original agreement where it has to compensate, obviously, because this has never changed year over year.
When's the last time we had a capital case here?
Okay. That's why the B is just in place because those are our apples. It's costly.
Correct.
So that eleven thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars is budgeted, but not necessarily spent for the capital case.
That's true.
Yeah.
But the actual cost for this agreement is a thousand dollars.
Did you see that on the last page?
It's right above paragraph one point two at the top of the paper.
That's a cost to justify.
Just, yeah, just the energy. All right, any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Vise habit, agenda item number nine passes. Agenda item ten, Bernard Trevino, county auditor, discuss, take action on improving installation of Christmas lights for courthouse, surrounding buildings and tree wraps with expense to be split between Wilson County and city of Floridsville in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Yes, so this is our third year of request to light the county courthouse, the surrounding buildings around the courthouse, and the tree wraps in preparation for the downtown lighting on November twenty-ninth. The total amount is the same as it was last year. Total amount is seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. I did confirm with the city of Florida's Zills Finance Director, and they are going to split the cost with us again this year, which they have done for the last two years. This is funded in Fund sixty-two hundred, which is non-taxpayer related. This money comes from capital credits that we receive annually. And right now, in that fund, we have about forty thousand dollars as of last week, so it would be eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Make a motion to approve the Christmas lights for courthouse for the eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number ten? Here and now, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Vise habit, motion passes. With agenda item number eleven, again, we have Bernard Trevino, county auditor, discuss and take action on improving a budget amendment to increase road and grid precinct three salary budget to include transferring your part-time position to full-time with benefits in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. This amount will come from precinct three fund balance.
Yes, so I have the budget amendment order here, eleven, ten, twenty, twenty-five. And I broke it down for you to see the amount in salary. Um, and I broke it down for you to see, um, the amount in salary, um, and the, uh, coordinating benefits, which include, um, transferring the money from the part-time position that was budgeted over to the full-time with the additional increase, um, social security, medical life insurance, retirement, workers' comp, and unemployment, and the breakdown is here for you. And just for clarification, uh, precinct three originally had seven full-time positions and one part-time position, um, and he is now transferring that part-time position into a full-time position, which eliminates any part-time, and he will have eight full-time. Commissioner Perdola, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to be made for agenda item number?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment to increase Rodean Bridge Precinct Three salary budget to include transferring a part-time position to a full-time position with benefits in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. This amount will come from Precinct Three's fund balance.
Sir.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Keen. Any other discussion regarding this agenda item? You're none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against nay? Ayes have it, motion passes. Agenda item number twelve, we have Commissioner Keen, precinct two, discuss and take action to reappoint Stephen Moore to the ESD number four board of commissioners.
Can I combine, uh, twelve and thirteen?
Okay, we can do that. Combination with, uh, agenda item number thirteen, discuss take action to reappoint Kenneth Griffin, Judge Griffin, to the ESD number four board of commissioners.
I make a motion to reappoint Stephen Moore and Kenneth Buck Griffin, JP two, to the ESD four board.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keen, seconded by Commissioner Moore. Any other discussion regarding agenda items number twelve and thirteen combined? You're none, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against nay? Ayes have it, both motions pass. Both agenda items pass, sorry. Yeah, they'll have to come and call us. Agenda item number fourteen, we have this Luis Dorado, our permitting and development director, who are fourteen A, one, utility permit, permit eight thirty-eight, frontier communications precinct three, county road three fifty-six, county road three fifty-seven, county road three fifty-nine, county road three sixty, and county road three sixty-one, review and approve.
Yes, good morning. Uh, this, uh, fiber permit was sent previously to Commissioner Perdola so that he could review the area beforehand, as well as the rest of commissioners' digital, digitally this time, instead of putting all these papers in your folders.
Yes.
I will make a motion that we accept permit number eight thirty-eight, frontier communications, for county road three fifty-six, three fifty-seven, three fifty-nine, three sixty, and three sixty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Keen. We have any other discussion regarding fourteen A one? You're none, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against nay? Ayes have it, motion passes. Fourteen A two, permit eight thirty-nine, spectrum precinct four, Live Oak Drive, Wood Valley Drive, Fuller Lane, Willow Bend Drive, and Springwood Lane.
These, uh, permits were sent to Commissioner Aiken as well. These will be mostly predominantly in subdivisions, uh, but still county maintained roads, so they were sent to all the other commissioners as well to review beforehand.
Make a motion that we accept permitting through no spectrum in regards to construction of fiber that they'll be doing on the Live Oak, Wood Valley, Fuller Lane, Willow Bend, and Springwood Lane.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion regarding fourteen A two? You're none, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against nay? Ayes have it, motion passes. Remove fourteen A three, permit eight forty, charter spectrum precinct four, Rosewood Drive, Legacy Trail, Legacy Run, and Legacy Ranch Drive.
These as well, we're, we're getting in a daze with fiber permits at this time. Uh, we know we can't stop them, we, we really don't have that much of a say-so unless they tear up our roads, but, uh, this is more for accountability. So this was also sent to Commissioner Aiken.
Make a motion that we accept permit eight forty from charter spectrum, uh, dealing with fiber optic being installed in Rosewood Drive, Legacy Trail, Legacy Run, and Legacy Ranch Drive.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Moore. Any other discussion regarding agenda fourteen A three?
I would like to make a comment, that since we are having them fully supermitt, I'm seeing a lot less damage to my county roads, uh, since we hold a little bit more accountable for before, they just came in there, did whatever, tore our roads up, and drove off, and didn't know who.
Yeah, every permit that gets submitted, uh, we try to get a point of contact for, for people that are, you know, on site, in case something happens.
We had a good meeting with the, uh, DC the other day, and they sat down, and told us, what do you want, county, what do you want? What was that compensation?
It was VTX, VTX.
Their government now grown, hardship this way.
I think it is helped tremendously by holding it accountable. They, they know that if you got poor permits that came just coming in.
Yeah, we have their information, yeah.
And I know they don't have to, but they seem to be willing to do that, and it has really helped a lot, Chris.
And I know I said in the previous court, but they, they're working with us much better, they're communicating with us much better, and, uh, you know, we just continue to reinforce, clean up after yourselves, make sure that it looks as good, wherever you leave it, it's a good interview out there. And, and so, it's been more, uh, they got a, uh, a board go wrong to where they, they had, uh, the actual drill break away, and they contacted me, and they go, we're stuck under your road. And we've already marked exactly where it is, because they're able to take, pretty much tell by the hand somewhere, everything's like, they went out, they go, what do you want to do? I go, let's do this, and, uh, you know, the, the patch works better than the road.
That company that we met with, VTX, set a really high standard. They sat down, they brought their contractors, they bought everybody that was gonna work on site. They gave us a number to contact in case we did have any issues and needed to make any claims. They even sat down with the commissioner and asked him to see what side of the road he preferred to go on, if there was anything that he, they needed to hold back, anything that they could help him with. So it was, it was a good experience with them.
And it's much better than, you know, some roads on the east side. Uh, it was basically, if they get done as fast as they could, and, uh, we have places where they thought they're up close to the fence line and property line, and in others where they're a couple of feet off the counter, and then I go, this is going to eventually get hit. You know, so just, uh, a lot more pleasant this year than it was last year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number fifteen, uh, county sheriff Jim Stewart, we have a report, Sheriff.
Uh, how did that work out with that ten thousand pound bridge? I got a hundred thousand pounds, and I'll go get you money up there. Nobody's gonna agree with this.
Agenda item number sixteen, this is agenda B of my county clerk, discuss take action on the commissioner's court minutes. Uh, if you are in your computer. I think there was a few corrections made this week.
And once, um, on your iPad, they are, get off of it. They've been reviewed by the county attorney and the county judge.
I'll make a motion to accept it, and it says presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Perdola, seconded by Mr. Keen. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number sixteen?
Actually, the spelling's incorrect on the iPad.
Is it, can you, can you check the minutes that you have, Judge?
Which one?
How I say. You go throughout the both documents, and they may be more than I am, a couple of extra letters in there. But we, but, because it's a legal document, I ask for it to be corrected.
Hold on, let me see where you're talking, where you're talking about.
So throughout the document, where the motion directed, it just... These are correct. They are, it's just that you say one word right here on, on this document, it is...
A legal sign?
Yeah, yes, okay. You're right.
And if, if what we sign is correct, that's...
They're correct.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Not, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against nay? Ayes have it, motion passes. Agenda item number seventeen, Taylor Bonford, a human resource specialist, presentation of payroll and personnel change.
Good evening. Carlos Leyhus was hired as a part-time road hand for precinct two, making seventeen dollars per hour, effective October twenty-eighth. Doris Harold was hired as a dispatcher for the sheriff's department, making twenty-three seventeen per hour, forty-eight thousand, one ninety-eight forty annually, effective November third. And Hugo Castro has resigned from his position as a corrections officer with the sheriff's department, effective November thirtieth.
Questions, Ms. Bonford? Agenda item number eighteen, Bernard Trevino, county auditor, discuss take action on county buildings.
I have a total of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight ninety-four, and sixty-seven cents.
I have a total of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight ninety-four and sixty-seven cents. Yeah, that would be the thing. Yeah.
I'm worried, I'm worried figuring it out. Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll play around with it, see if we can get it out in there.
And of course, we still send these out to you by email Friday.
Yeah.
Or what they're depending on email.
You can't get it before Friday, I mean, Jason, deadline for agenda items. One of the, you can't get this like on Wednesday.
No, because we're still in trying those ones.
I don't care about the others. Just not the rest of them.
Oh, I know about that. I'm, I thought you were talking about this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's see what we can do. Well, I know, I know. So we didn't have an invoice from the public for collections or something.
Couldn't hear any, sir.
From the public, it's a collection. There's nothing to republic in here. I mean, it's, it's great, it's only hundred twenty-nine dollars per month, but.
I don't think that they hold off very much because I drive that road and, and there was a lot there on the facility as opposed to normally. I was like, okay, don't know if it was a supply and demand issue and, and he was having a hard time getting it picked up, uh, or what exactly.
Well, here's, here's what happened. So now with help with Commissioner King, we now have one of his. Nobody can operate the skid steer out there cause Mike is still on. All I do, and then the other gentleman only operates the front end loader. So we have, we're paying some overtime until Mr. Lucio comes back to one of Commissioner King's employees who goes out there Saturday and Mondays to load these. We're not getting paid Monday, he gets to go over there and he loads those bins. Some of those bins didn't get loaded because they're on the ground. Now that's been really put back into the dumpster. Uh, so that may be why we didn't get a bill during that time period because there was no movement out there for that.
Or it could be that we haven't received the bill yet.
Could be.
Well, no, it just seemed like we always have one. And then on, on non-departmental, we have PDK for the Expo Center. And it says it's American Rescue Plan. Shouldn't all that be? Shouldn't the American Rescue Plan be funding the, I mean, the Expo Center? This shouldn't be non-departmental, it should be wherever Expo Center is in the.
It's, this is going fourteen hundred departmental four of nine, which means the American Rescue Plan is funded. Non-departmental under this, this is not twelve hundred, this is fourteen hundred.
Right, but, so how does this get accounted for in the overall budget for that whole project?
It's in a separate fund, one fund, one. This, you're getting non-departmental, you're receiving the department, that's not one.
Right, right. I don't understand at all, but, cause the whole, the whole thing is not funded under the rest.
Not all of it, no. So we have the invoices under this fund until we utilize all of that money and then once we are done using that that fund, then the remaining budget covers all the charges.
What's one hundred and seventy?
So if you look at this, one fourteen hundred here in the American Rescue Plan, there's where we have all of the items that are being submitted here. Where you see the expenses. So the entire project, number fourteen hundred, here you have the revenue, here you have the.
Okay, but where, where's the town?
Right, we have the branch location all the time.
So it's going to be charged here at three ninety-nine.
That's, that's the right.
It is, and then it'll also be here.
All right, Commissioner Glenda Campbell. Say next one.
I make a motion to waive your bills of three hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred nine four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding Agenda Item Number Eighteen? You're none? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay? Eyes have it, motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those nay? We are adjourned.